For all, thank you very much. Communication and review of the agenda from.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Happy Board Appreciation Month again, Board. Thank you for all your service to our community. We do have a few directors who were unable to make it tonight. Director Shortcliff is excused tonight. Director Bishop may be here later this evening. He's managing a couple of different meetings. We'll we'll hope to see him later tonight. Also want to publicly thank our RHS kiddos for the great dinner tonight. They provided dinner for our board tonight and cabinets to thank you there. And also tonight, a couple of things, just of appreciation. Also thank Janet Steph for putting together these great baskets that has have my name on them. But you know what that really means is great people were helping with this. So thank you very much Janet. And also tonight, you have an envelope from the RHS basketball team. Jordan Humphries has a gift for you there from that basketball team. So hopefully you enjoy that and you can see that tonight. So thank you again for all the service you provide for our community. And we really couldn't do this work without you and we're grateful for your service. So thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to move forward with the agenda. It first up tonight, we're going to have the principal from Roseburg High School, like Weber.
To talk about a graduation rate and our ninth grade on track data. Both of them are kind of complex in the way they're calculating the numbers there. So we're going to start off I'm talking just a little bit about how they're calculated. And we'll be talking about what the data is showing us and the work that we're doing around that. So it's kind of the way it's going to flow. But please, if there's any time along the way that we say something or that you're not sure, or you have questions, stop us and pause because we want to make sure. Sometimes we use educational language that we know what we're talking about, but not everybody else may have that same understanding. And so I want to, on the next slide, we have a up chair.
Yeah.
How you work.
I'll go ahead and pull it up right now. Give me just, I'm sorry, do you start? I'll get that up, I promise.
I have, I have mine. Thank you. I just, I think we're going to cast it. That's what we're trying to do. So I wanted to thank the board for their work around putting together the strategic plan and the vision for the work that we're doing. The statements that you wrote about all students will receive the care and support and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures is absolutely at the heart of what we do. And that has centered around the decisions we're making, that centered around how we support children and what we want for their next step. So that your vision is our vision and it's it's helping us through that work.
So I have two numbers that.
Jordan, wait till we get that. There we go.
All right, all right. So I have two numbers that we're going to go over that have very important within the state data that is going to get released. The first one is ninth grade on track. And the second one is graduation rate. I'm going to start off with the number for ninth grade on track. Um, this is a one year calculation. And what it shows is the percentage of freshmen who are on track at the end of their or at the end of their freshman year going into their sophomore year. In order to be considered on track by the state, the student needs to have accrued six or more credits by the time they start their sophomore year. So what that means is that the summer school credits do count towards being on track to graduate within that. So just as an example, if a student failed three classes during the regular school year, they would be considered off track to graduate as they would have only 5.5 credits. If they come in during the summer and they make up that algebra class that they struggled with in the second semester, that would then put them up at six credits and then they would be considered on track to graduate. All right. So with it, once that happens, it's a simple percentage. So how that works is the total number of on track students is divided by the total number of students. And that's how you derive your percentage. Now, the next question is, well, who are all the students? As you can imagine, we get a lot of students coming in and out of school the entire time. And so how the state does that is the magic date is May the first. So they'll take every student that is enrolled at RHS on May the first. So how this works is if a student shows up on, let's say, April the 28th, out of no, you know, transfers in from another district, they come in with it, it doesn't matter if they have, you know, their credit deficient, it doesn't matter what their attendance rate is, if they show up, they're enrolled at that point and they're still still on our rolls on the first. There there are students. At the same time, if the student leaves on the 28th or the 29th and they are off of our roles by the first, they also are not, they're no longer included in this toll.
This is the main first that follows those this in September, the beginning of their sophomore year or the main first that precedes.
Proceeds, sir. Yep. Wonderful. Yep. So it kind of, so the way it kind of, when I start really getting into the nitty gritty of this, basically I pull the roster on May the first and then I know those are the students that we're going to do the calculation.
No, correct. Yep.
All right. The reason that this is such an important number is ninth grade on track is predictive of what the graduation rate is going to be three years later. But this is really important. It only accounts for one year worth of data. So we're taking that snapshot at the end of their freshman year, and that means we have three more years where the entire picture is going to develop over time. All right. So that'll lead us to graduation rate. And this is, this one's a little bit more complicated and there's a lot of kind of ins and outs with this. The biggest difference is this. Graduation rate is a four year calculation. So our freshman class is already starting to accrue data for their graduation rate. So we just had a semester in, credits were rewarded. And they're already making movements towards what this is going to look like. It takes into account that whole career. And who is included in this is going to be all students whose last school attended was RHS. So there's a lot of movement within this. So just as an example, if a student transfers in as a sophomore tomorrow and they start second semester with us, they will be in RHS student. But if at another date, they transfer back out to a different school, the second they touch foot, you know, their feet touch a different hallway, they're no longer on our roles. They're now with the school that they attended last.
And this works for whatever grade. So we have a senior that moves in and we just had that a senior today, talk with a counselor that moved in. And they are where they're ours regardless of where they were before. Yeah.
So if a student drops out, but their last school in which they were enrolled was Roseburg High School, then we count them, right?
Absolutely. Okay.
So here's a really good example. I'm going to change a few of the details, just ran into nitty. But we had a student come come in that you're going to be starting as a senior for their second semester of their senior year. They've been in and out of a lot of different systems in their life. They currently are sitting on 10 credits.
And how many should they have?
They should, they should have 24 credits. They should be getting about 18, 19 credits to have have a really good shot. Honestly, it should be a 21 credits to be like fully on track. So the chances of the student actually, you know, getting to over the line by the time their cohort is due for graduation, not real high. Now, that being said, it's the, it's a great thing for the student. And it's a great thing for the community that this student is here and we want them. And so we're doing everything we can to make sure that that student has every chance of graduating, whether it's this year or next year or whenever we can get them there.
I think it's also important to note that graduation is a full four year graduation date. So some of our students take five years or maybe even longer than that. So this calculation rate does is not include students who take longer than the four years. So it's a four year group of students or our cohort, which is a group of students graduating in four years.
So, so this kind of calculation of what who's 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 student is one reason why some schools actually will steer students into alternative settings, which is a practice that we avoid because we believe all of our students should be at RHS. So you know, you can imagine with all this tracking who is in the calculation, who is not in the calculation is a really extensive process that actually takes a lot of time and energy.
So I know I approve a lot of transfers into the high school. And I remember we had the discussion here at the board level about when we're doing that. So I just had a pretty good group of students are coming from Douglas or from Sutherland or from Glide that came in at second semester. So I'm approving a lot that come in. Now, I know that that Mr. Corden's office tracks that. I'm really on the plus and minus, but I think at the high school level more coming in. We do have students that go out as well to smaller schools, but we do have quite a few that come in.
Yeah, might be worth noting too. It's a little bit of an aside, but I mean, one of the things at the high school, we believe strongly in is when the kids come to us, they are ours that in terms of their support. And we don't see, we don't see a lot of parity in that discussion and always surrounding districts where we see revocations happening. So in other words, you're not attending at the the rate we we tend to, we tend to get kids that do come back to us. Our philosophy is here is when they start with us, we're going to give them the support they need. And so it's the right thing to do. And that is, that does, that is unique in our district in comparison to some surrounding districts.
The other kind of part of this is what defines a graduate. So for the state, for the state metric, only students who earn a regular or modified diploma count as a graduate. So just as an example, a student who earns a GED or a certificate of attendance will count as a non-graduate within the data. So just as an example, this is the, this cohort is the first year that includes our GED data. The GED program attracted non-RHS students who, once they entered that our that program, now became part, part of our cohort. So just as an example, we had 13 students earn a GED in the cohort. This is a benefit to those students. It is a benefit to the community. But it does hurt our graduation rate because it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to earn a diploma by the time their cohort has arrived. Particularly if they enter the program as a senior. So the good news is with the way that it's structured, that this also does create a pathway towards a full diploma. So it could end up leading to more graduates total as we move on down the line with the program. The other aspect is certificate of attendance. A certificate of attendance is for students usually who have a disability and that would prevent them from earning a regular diploma. And for the purposes of this data, those students count as a non-graduate.
Did. Thank you. Sorry. So you can see that those are almost exactly correlated there. You also can see at the state level, when we hit distance learning, the impact that it had across the state on their students, that being in school with people, learning together in that community is necessary for that success of our students. So as a state, we saw that. So the next graph is going to show the work we've done at the high school and how distance learning impacted that. So you can see in 1415, looking at the black line, our students were about mid 70 by 77% on track. You can see in ninth, in the next year, 1516, there was a little bump. And then is when our work really started to kick off, when we started seeing the growth in the ninth grade on track and we went way up to 80, it was 87, I think, and then up to above 90, we were heading in those right directions. Then I guess that's what the the orange graph, you can see how we went all the way up to 92 and 94. We were right up in that very high in in 1920. Our graduation has mirrored that those lines. And you can see how, in fact, it's even higher than the ninth grade because of the additional work that we've done with students. We have a 10th grade cohorts that we work with in terms of a solo learning community where teachers are following these 10th graders to make sure they're successful. Our summer school work, the graduation coach work, all that that's helped our graduation rate go up. And you can see that in 1920, we hit the highest that we'd had in our ninth grade on track data. And what happened the year we had distance learning with that ninth grade on track data. And it dropped down in 2021 to below 75%. We didn't have the supports, the care, the connection, the those extra things we have for students and that that made a difference for our ninth grade on track. You also can see that if we were following our graduation rate this year with was correlated with our ninth grade, we would have been above 90%. But COVID impacted our kids. It impacted us. It impacted our community and our data is showing that. It's, it's heartbreaking to see this because everything we were doing in the school was heading towards these more successful, higher level graduation rates. And those times were devastating for all of us. And so we're seeing the impact of that.
But the 2021 graduation rate, black dot in above the orange dot for the 17 to 18. That's that reflects the work you guys have done after.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Yep. And then you can see now in the 1819 where they were, and you can see that we're projecting our graduation rate to be around 80% or just below that. And we really were ready to cheer for above 90%. And we know that this has impacted our kids. The good news is that you can see that when we came back in 2122, it's made a difference for our kids. Being in the building is important, connecting with the adults, having the supports available that we have for kids makes a difference. So next slide. So I'm going to have Rob just talk about what happened. Why did all this look like it did?
All right. So a majority of the 2022 non-graduates stopped attending during distance learning despite our best efforts. We called parents, we texted, we even came to them. So I'm going to, I'll give you one example. This was a student who going into their final semester of school. So there's the second semester, their senior year was on track to graduate. They were within two credits of what they needed to get over the line to 24. The student started working a fast food job. And very quickly, it became a vital resource for the student and his and his family to be able to keep the family going. We had multiple conversations with parents. We had multiple conversations with the student. And at one point, we literally showed up to his work with a computer. Hey, please finish this. Finish this off, get your diploma. You're going to be really happy you did. Unfortunately, it didn't work. And the student is a non-graduate. The statewide drop that was on that chart that we saw with the ninth grade on track was not limited just to freshmen. During distance learning, this was replicated across the school at all grade levels. And the reason for this is many of the ways that we build carrying connections were simply unavailable to us during distance learning. As a result, many students left school, even though many of them were on track to graduate. The result is that our graduation rate was not where our ninth grade on track predicted where it would be. So I wanted to follow this up with just kind of one more story. And so this was a student who I worked with a lot and she was a member of our transition program. So we have a transition program that happens over the summer. We know the transition between eighth and ninth grade is one of the most difficult parts of graduation of getting to graduation. And so we have a program where we identify students who could use some extra supports. We have them come over and get used to life at RHS, build connections with teachers, let them see what clubs and activities and just all of the wonderful things that happen at RHS every day look like. My favorite part of the program is the last day when they put on a Roseburg High School T-shirt for the first time. It's a wonderful program and this student was a graduate from there. She had an incredible freshman year. She passed all of her classes. She was absolutely rocking it on the right track. Came into distance learning and home was hard. It was difficult and she quickly found herself in an untenable situation. She went out and got a job and started supporting herself. We started, she started missing school. We reached out, we kept trying to make a connection and she would respond. She would kind of log in for a little while and try and make it. And then she'd fall back off again and we tried to make, try to have it happen again. The result was she started getting behind and then she got discouraged. And literally, you know, throughout the next couple of years, she'd come in for a couple of weeks and then fall off again. And that student is unfortunately a non-graduate. Even though she was making every stride prior to, in order to to get to that diploma. Now, next slide. So looking forward, as I mentioned, graduation rate is a four year calculation and carrying connection and learning time really mattered. And its loss also really matters. So students who who dropped out from other cohorts are going to continue to impact our data. So this isn't a one group thing. And so the next couple of cohorts are also going to be affected by this. And once they're no longer in our system, they still kind of follow that cohort unless they enroll in another school. And with these students, we will, of course, continue our efforts to reengage students as we have been this entire time. And we're caught, we are confident that we will be able to get many of these students into school and to ultimately earn a diploma. Although this has been difficult, I'm very optimistic. And the reason for that is this, the ninth grade on track metric, which is predictive, rebounded this year and I believe is going to continue to rebound as we kind of rebuild our momentum. But this is going to take time for that to come to fruition. And we know that the best way to accelerate this recovery is through the caring connections that we build every day.
Writing questions on the of that so far. Okay. So I want to talk about what are we doing when Rob talks about the carrying and connection? What does that mean? And so using the boards work around our strategic plan, strategic plan and the Karen connection, support and instruction areas. These are some of the supports that we offer all students. We have a lot of clubs and activities and athletics happening on campus, a place for kids to connect and belong and feel successful at something. We have social emotional learning happening. We're training staff on suicide prevention and other supports on how to support students who may be in crisis. We have a PBIS system, which is a behavior support system that positively reinforces students for correct behavior and identifies areas where they're doing well. So we believe if we teach them, we reinforce them and we support them, they're going to be successful. We have advisory with a four year cohort group in the same group. We have after school activity bus. So if a student needs transportation home and wants to stay after school, we offer that for them. We have on campus mental and physical health built in every day onto our campus. And we're so thankful to have those services back for our students. We during distance learning, we had hotspot and Chromebook distribution to make sure every one of our kids had computers. We didn't rely on kids coming to us and trying to get their wifi on a bus. We made sure that they had everything they needed. And we went to their homes. We provide meals at school during distance learning and three hot meals a day at our campus if kids need that. We have a clothing closet that is operated on our campus and supported by volunteers and by our key club. And so any kids who needs a prom dress or a coat or even some other supplies, we have those available. Admin and counselors have regular check-ins with students. Some students meet every day for a positive check-in in the morning, the end of the day, others are once a week. And I can test some of the the meetings that my administrators have having and the support that they've given students and the difference they're making by those personal connections. We have been working on our instruction and making sure it's engaging. The kids are talking, that they're talking with each other, they're debating things, they're learning from one another. It's not a sit and get, but it's the kids are talking more than the adults. We are implementing new student entrance course, interest courses. And we talked about some of those courses at our curriculum instruction meeting. We have a strong credit recovery program, a strong summer school program. We have our tutoring and we have strategies classes, which are extra courses for students who may need more support in a content area. So if math has been something that may be difficult, we'll offer a math strategies course in addition to the math course. So they're, they have the extra time and support to learn that math and be successful. So they're not getting behind. And in addition to all of that, for our ninth and 10th grade students, we have smaller learning communities where the same group of teachers and students are connected together. They're released once a month to support the kids, look at data, call home, celebrate with kids and also create plans for students. Again, the social emotional learning is built into what they do. Link day and link program supports that transition. We also have advisory lessons on how to do school and what does high school look like and what's ninth grade? Because there's a lot of unwritten rules about high school that we'd rather tell them than have them learn the hard way. We have a graduation coach that supports them. We have a ninth grade success team and we met this evening for a couple of hours, looking at data and planning how to support our ninth graders, looking at we look already first semester data just came out yesterday and we have plans using that data for what we need to do next because we know we want to keep growing with that. And we have an attendance monitor who identifies students who have been absent and plans around to support them. In addition, the instruction, we have a ninth grade transition class, which Rob just talked about during the summer, the ninth grade summer proficiency program. So if a student fails their English or math course, we have a special class where they come together as ninth graders with teachers, supporting them, instructing them towards proficiency. We have a house class and we have credit recovery in addition to that. So those are just some of them. I could probably go on for hours about all the supports we have. But your focus on Karen connection and making sure we're serving all kids by having them all with us is something we take very seriously. So we believe our students are resilient. We believe that our staff is dedicated to the student's success and we believe that this data is going to improve because of the work we're doing, but we know COVID had a pretty big impact on them. So that is our presentation. I'd love to take questions if you have them. Yeah.
I'm glad your team is here tonight. So I can thank them. I know you guys and all the staff, the teachers, everybody involved there. It's they're doing what we need to do. And quite frankly, I'm done with COVID. And it sounds like you guys are too. You're moving forward. We all knew it was going to be quite frankly, disaster. And but we have to move forward and I've sat through meetings like this many, many years. This is I mean, you've done a good job explaining all this, but and guy, you were perfect.
Thank you.
You know, and the community needs to know this. Somehow we've got to get this out. You know, the community needs to understand that the board and Swiss, we're not the enemy. We're here to do what's for work for our kids and do things that will make our kids and our community successful. And we're not like what's going on in Virginia and all, you know, those big high fruton cities. Just don't allow that to happen here. We're a conservative, small town where we want our kids to do the very best. You guys are really working hard at it. I appreciate it very much.
I think what this story tells us is that they need us. Our school is very important to kids. And what we do makes a difference. Thank you, Rod, for that. That means a lot.
I also just want to thank you guys. I think sometimes it's easier to, you mentioned placing kids in alternative schools or doing things like that because it can make your graduation numbers look better. I appreciate that we are more concerned about doing the right thing for kids than we are about looking better. Because that GED program is life changing for so many of our students. And really, their next. And really their next step up for, if you look at what is at the heart of what we want to do. We want to prepare these kids for their future lives after graduation. And for some kids, that involves the GED and it does hurt our graduation rate. It won't look as shiny and as pretty. But it's the right thing to do for kids and I, I'm grateful for your whole staff. For rallying around that program and making that happen for our students who need it. So thank you.
I look at this and this is a huge undertaking that you're, you're doing. And it's definitely needed and I really do. Do feel like, you know, you've got the heart to do all that you can. And I think sometimes we get more critical by the numbers and like, like Becky said that. You know, but what you are doing is, is necessary and it will get them to where they need to go. So I just appreciate the. Just mainly the support column there. You've got a lot of coaches. It sounds like I'd almost like to go to the high school and see the attendance person. How they must encourage those kids just to be there, to get there, to stay there for the day. You know, and that's a job. It's something that is a challenge, I think for them and I think. Yeah, if we can, you know, get the word out. What is your position?
I'm, I'm, I'm one of those coaches. I'm, I'm the graduation coach.
You're the graduation coach. Okay, you know, I wish there were about ten of you, you know.
Thank you.
I just remember in, in high school too, just. You know, we had one counselor and, you know, and that was who was juggling all the schedules and. And, but this one. I wished I'd had someone that could have really coached me, you know, to decisions. And I think such a valuable position and, and I think you're, you're much needed and appreciated. Thank you, man. Thank you.
Do it delete.
So, I understand all these services. That seem to me. Were. Would work with a kid who has. A desire to attend school. I'm coming hopefully to the end of about a six-year vicious custody divorce. Where. One of the kids who seemed to be right and doing well. Aligned with one of the parents. Lots of conflict between the parents. That conflict included. The parent who was, whom the child was not aligned. Criticizing the other parent for difficulties at school. And you'd think that that would motivate the kid to do better. But it motivated the kid more to align with the parents that that kid was already with. And over the years, you know, I would, I would see the stuff parents can get about the teachers. Please get your work done. Please get your work done. Please come in. And offering services and the child just seemed to withdraw farther and farther from education to graduate. And I'm not sure what tools we have. To get at. The. What I think of as, as more structural causes of kids. Not, not putting school where we think it ought to be. Do you need some sort of more, and this one, I got a circuit court judge telling the kid, well, it doesn't do any good.
Wish I had the magic answer for that because if I did, we'd be doing it. And I think this is a community. Responsibility and a community project that we have to talk about why school's important, the value that it brings, is good for our whole community when that happens. And we're, we're on our next steps as we're doing exactly that. We're, we're planning a campaign about high school's importance. About the, the trades you can learn there, the certificates you can earn, the college credits you can get. So kind of coming back to not just you have to go to school because it's important, but. Look what school offers for you and all the cool things happening when you're not there. So that's our next, our next kind of project that we're heading towards right now. So I wish I had the magic answer.
I mean, it seems to me getting kids to go to school has to be a matter of offering them apples rather than moving them back in.
That's, that's exactly what we're, that's what we're doing. Yep, yep. Said very nicely.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just to that, I would say we are partnering with. Other organizations that have skills and behavioral health and mental health. That's not necessarily our skill. We could use social workers and other, we're working with partners on that. It does reemphasize, I mean, it does reiterate though, that the, the most important teachings are really within the walls of the home, particularly in those young years. And, and so to the extent we can have an influence on those. Primary years, we're starting to think differently about how we ensure kids can come ready to learn. While still maintaining. The integrity of what our design is, which is to meet them when they get there. And so it's, it's a balance as we try to figure out how to navigate. Know that, that parent support, but that parent support piece is becoming increasingly important. It's not something we can wait in our community for people to have this support. And so that's, we're continuing to roll out some additional ways to meet parents where they are and, and provide a venue to, to work together for the success of their kids.
Any other director? I want to first say, I'm very grateful for all the work each of you have done to put this together. Before I can. Move forward, I need to know in subsequent years, if you change how you calculate the data. Because if you change how you calculate, I don't know whether it's a trend change or a spike. So I need for you to do this consistently, year after year. So the two years from now, three years from now, we could say the data that was presented in January twenty-three. Is being applied the same way, January twenty-four, January twenty-five. If some reason you change how you calculate, all these numbers will become mute.
Well, the state tells us how to do it. So we follow what they tell us to do and if they tell us to change it, we'll let you know.
Thank you. Because that, that, to me, if I see numbers going in the one direction, I can say it's a trend. But if I see some spike, we can explain the spike. But if we change the calculation, you throw everything off.
Well, in that graph, everything was calculated the same. So that, that.
That's, that's critical to me.
We were really proud of that trend and where we were going and.
That's very critical, very critical. And on behalf of the board, I'm very grateful for all of the effort that your staff and you have done to bring that information to the board. We need to hear this timely and we need to hear it in a manner so that we can understand it.
So when we go to the graduation spring and we get this folder with all these kids' names. Is it practical to be able to put down the bottom? We're graduating four hundred and eighty-five kids. Four hundred and thirty of them are four-year graduates and go, go under the state. Forty of them are five-year graduates and we set up these different categories.
Yeah, there's not a lot of five-year graduates that actually cross the stage, but we could do that. And we mark the students who are on their GED, we mark that. Students who modified and regular diploma is not marked differently. And I think that's important to me that we don't do that. But if they're a fifth year.
Summary, this is, this is, and even we could say. There's four hundred and fifty kids that are graduating in June. In addition, we have thirty kids that graduated during the year.
Yeah, yeah, you should do something like that.
I think it'd be good for the public to be aware of all these.
Yeah, but it's not just this one little box that happens on that day. Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I, on behalf of the, me and my team and the, the staff, we so appreciate your support that you've given us through all of this and all the extra help. And it's, it's important to us because this work doesn't happen without great leadership and, and support of the board and the community. So thank you for that.
Does this program appear separately in the budget? Or is it simply a period of secondary education?
Which program?
This is the, the graduation. Support. All this, all this.
Graduation coaches paid out of high school success, which is Measure ninety-eight funds, which is to support the high school with. Ninth grade on track, moving towards graduation rates, all of those pieces. So our LLCs, graduation coach, a lot of this work is funded through Measure ninety-eight.
And that is separate in the budget, I believe.
Will that be?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. We're going to take about a three, three and a half minutes break before we get into the bond discussion. If you'd like to depart, feel free to do so.
We're going to be asked to sit up here. She might as well move now. That's odd. Alright.
I, I would have worn my, my tie and suit.
Cheryl, you're going to sit there.
No, I was going to replace, no, I was going to set, no, I was going to set the. Batter, replace the batteries and then sit back in my seat, but that seems to be back on, but I'll just take it so Tracy gets the live.
I'd like to re, resume the meeting. Next item is up, it will be a bond discussion. And may I remind everyone that this is a discussion, a work session. Turning it over to the superintendent, Gary.
Thank you, Director Johnson. I appreciate that and I'm thankful to spend a few minutes with the board tonight. Talking about some needed investments for our kids and our staff and our community, by the way, of a potential capital improvement bond. I want to just go back a little bit for history's sake, a short walk down memory lane. After the defeat of the. One hundred and fifty-four million dollar bond in May two thousand twenty-two. We met as a group at our subsequent board meeting to discuss next steps and some of the, the polling results. In that meeting in May, the board engaged in a process of prioritization. And you collectively indicated your desire to move forward with a bond in two thousand, in May of two thousand twenty-three. That focused on top priority projects and investments. That both were important to the board and important to the community. As indicated by the polling results, in the polling information we had in the May twenty-two. Bond process. Those priorities included school security and safety projects district-wide. They included building renovations and repairs to address health and safety issues across the district. As well as a rebuild of the old main at Roseburg High School. One thing that I reflected on as I thought back at that meeting was in proposing in June. A pared-down list of projects, the board indicated your respect for the community's call for a smaller financial investment. While continuing the vital work of ensuring that our schools are safe. And have functional spaces for quality teaching and learning. Since the previous bond campaign, I'll share with you tonight some of the updated cost estimates for the top priority projects. As well as some details about each of those projects. I've also included for you tonight, a, the last slide, a chart. That outlines the proposed bond issuance amount and the associated levied rate per thousand assessed value. So tonight, again, it's a work session, it provides an opportunity for the board to engage in a discussion about these investments. And following the discussion tonight, and again, like Director Johnson said, it's not a vote tonight. Based on the discussion tonight, we will prepare a resolution for the February eighth meeting for the board to vote on. That resolution will have both a project list as well as a total dollar amount and that will be essentially the essence of the discussion tonight. After we, and that again, will. The February eighth board meeting that we have next scheduled. The passage of that resolution will allow us to meet the filing deadlines for a bond next month. After I go through this short presentation and you have the copies there, I'll, I'll make this relatively quick. I'll turn it over to Director Johnson to lead a board discussion and also want to recognize Tracy Graff, our plant manager, who's here tonight. To answer any specific questions you might have about each of these projects. So there are essentially three categories in which these investments fall. And the first is, are in direct security measures. That would be investments. Again, some of this is, most of this is a repeat from really the last two bond campaigns. We have quite a number of safety and security projects that are happening across the district right now. Fencing, visitor management system. We also have the development and construction of vestibules, either in process or. In the process of architectural bid-ready documents right now. That is not included, to be clear, in these estimates. Those are paid through, paid for by, are being paid for. By one-time Esser COVID relief money. And so this additional four point four million dollars is exactly that. This is in addition to the investments we're paying for. Out of district-received federal funds that came through COVID. So this four point four million dollars in security would include controlled access systems district-wide. Controlled access provides a couple of. Benefits for safety. It allows a building to quickly go into a lockout, a lockdown, evacuation. We have buildings, I know Tracy, how many doors do you think we have at the high school, for example? Right out the gate, I'm asking questions. Okay, it's a hundred and twenty. And we have, it's a, it's a large campus and has multiple individual. Doors. So our traditional currently. In the event of a threat outside to children, we are scrambling people to run around to go try to lock doors in multiple spaces. We don't really have a controlled access. We have, we really don't have controlled access really in any of our buildings. That would provide an immediate response to a safety issue. That would alert and be able to lock a building down. And this, this investment will allow us to do that at the push of a button in every building. We've adopted a standard, standard response protocol that has different measures we take based on a potential threat. And it could be every, anything from evacuation to even a shelter in place. We, we would have a system that would sync. Uh, we, we would have a system that would sync our practices to a technology that would allow us to react quickly in the event of an emergency. This would also involve, um, a number of protective window films in, uh, the event that we have a potential intrusion, whether that be a patron, um, with a baseball bat who wants to get in. Or, uh, even potentially, um, some safety glass that would, that would allow even, uh, or limit to some extent, uh, intrusion that could come through other mechanisms, including, you know, potentially in some of these spaces, even, uh, the vestibules we've looked at, uh, glass that would stop, for example, a nine-millimeter round. In addition, in addition, uh, security items would be the completion of district-wide safety cameras and integration, continued integration of those. As well as perimeter fencing at all athletic properties. Now, the board may say, I thought we were, uh, securing buildings with Esser funding, and we are. Uh, but we have a, I'll, um, we pick on Fremont, for example, um, we have not, we do not have, we, we are securing that building site. But we still have potential threats behind the building that aren't secured, and we have children out in athletic events and PE, and those spaces are currently not in the budget to secure, and this investment would allow us to do that. And the health and safety, um, this is a little bit unique because we have two different packages for the board to consider in this. This is a forty-five uh, point four million dollar top-end package. If, uh, the board, uh, elects to move forward with both packages for air quality and roofing, so I'll be quick on this. Uh, we've talked a lot about air quality, um, over the last couple of years, not just with COVID, but uh, we seem to, it seems to be becoming commonplace that fires and wildfires mark. Um, it seems to be an alarming trend that this is, uh, becoming a norm for us, and in our current situation, we are unable, uh, in most of our buildings to, to filtrate that air. And we have, um, only a few buildings that have adequate air exchange. So the first package would upgrade heating systems district-wide. Uh, would improve ventilation, air exchange throughout the entire district, it's a twenty-million-dollar package for air quality. Package two does that and, uh, provides cooling, uh, district-wide. The roofing packages, we have ten million dollars in immediate roofing needs, that's package one, it would take care of the immediate needs, package two would do that and address some medium-term needs that we have, it's initial three point three million dollars for a total of thirteen point three on package two. The other four items are plumbing, electrical systems, fire detection systems, and asbestos removal. Um, these are ones we've talked about in the past, and we can go into more detail if the board wants those. Those were part of the package, both in the May twenty-twenty bond and the May twenty-twenty-two bond. The third item here is the, is a rebuild of the old main. And, uh, as we, uh, worked with, uh, our construction management firm, uh, that number has jumped up from thirty million to thirty-one point five million. And we've talked about, we have renderings of, of what that could look like, and that number's at thirty, thirty-one point five. So, just for, um, clarity's sake, um, if the board were to move forward on an investment at the package-two level, the higher level for air quality and for roofing, that bond total would be eighty-one point three million dollars. We have applied for and received an awesome grant at five point eight million dollars. That would put, uh, the total package at the top end of this, of these three items, at seventy-five point five million dollars, which is a little under half of what the May twenty-two, uh, twenty-two bond was. Now, in terms of what that means, in terms of a bond issuance and the, the levied rate per thousand, uh, the seventy-five point five million dollar, um, a twen- and a twenty-year bond issuance would be ninety-nine cents per thousand. That compares to May twenty-two, which was at a dollar eighty-five per thousand assessed. Uh, did get a question about a twenty-five-year bond, um, what, what it would look like if it was a twenty-five-year bond at, at the seventy-five-five, and that would be eighty-six and a half cents per thousand assessed. So with that, um, if there are any questions, uh, feel free to ask those. I will turn it over to Director Johnson to lead the discussion from here. And, um, happy to help as needed.
I desire to give each director an opportunity to share their comments so that we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak and everyone has an opportunity to hear. Without any, uh, further ado, Director Kim, do you have any questions?
So the, the chart here, uh, with the expenses, um, if that is for a twenty-year.
Correct. So I'll put it up so people online can see. Yeah, so the, and, you know, I, I don't know the percentage, we'd have to ask, um, a bond counsel, but it is in my experience, it's been much more common to have a twenty-year bond. That is the kind of standard, that has been our history in our own district. We passed a bond in two thousand two, correct? Uh, was a twenty-year bond, that's been paid off, so, uh, the chart you'll see there is a twenty-year bond, um, and the, and the, um, levied rate that would associate that, uh, the one at the bottom is just, we worked with our, uh, bond council finance today to get the, to just see what it would be at a twenty-five. Um, but the, the twenty-year bond is what we, uh, is, the last two uh, times we've attempted a bond has been a twenty-year bond rate. So this chart is a twenty-year bond issuance, is issuance, with the exception of the last item there, which has it at twenty-five.
And, um, for, for tax purposes, our property taxes. What that bond was satisfied in what years? Was it twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah, two thousand twenty-one, I think the last payment we made in November, is that right? Yeah, November of twenty-one, um, so that, what we see, those investments at the high school, Rose Theater, and there were other district-wide investments. Uh, work was completed, and we had people on this board who, um, were deeply involved in that process. Um, yeah, that was completed, and that our community has had a vision and accepting that, that work was done, and we are benefiting from that work today. I still hear about that new building at the high school, it is, uh, looks great. Um, but it's, uh, about twenty years ago that that happened, and that work is, is coming up on, doing, and districts on a great job keeping that looking great, and, um, but yeah, that, that, um, in people's taxes, that is not an, an item in people's taxes, that, that has been paid off, and it's not levied at this point.
So we're talking about adding now this, um, with this pawn, adding to um, individual property taxes, that amount per thousand.
Director Lee?
The, uh, the things that we dropped here, we're not building the multi-use rooms for the elementary schools. We're not doing a lot of new square footage for, for the elementary schools. Which is a significant. The, the big, the biggest item here, of course, is rebuilding or replacing the old name. And right now, we have almost all of those classes in other buildings where they fit, but it's inconvenient and awkward and all that sort of thing. It says it shows green. I'm such a sensitive sort of guy. So I got that chunk of money would let us teach kids better and give us more flexibility as the student body grows. But it hasn't grown yet. The, the controlled access system and the camera system completion. With the controlled access system, give us video observation of all of these various viewpoints.
Uh, yes, currently, most schools have that, it's just expanding now, uh, more views within the, the campus. Um, backsides of buildings, hallways, some of that stuff. Yeah.
You're gonna think, I think the video, I, I think the electronic access will have some sort of video, and once you know what's happening. Less.
Correct.
Those are fairly modest expenses. We're limited to fencing around the athletic properties, this is what we're talking about, the, the chamber, the fence, with the slice, and the same sort of thing. And that would, I mean, it's very vulnerable when they're on, on play areas. Um, and when you talk about Fremont, Fremont, but they're already coming all the woods up there, like Noah's man. Uh, we haven't really been going about that. Even upgraded and installed, even cooling areas to assist. Package one, package two, what's turning on, it's turning on. So package two is, is doing a bunch of stuff.
It would add air conditioning capabilities.
I understand air exchange stuff being important because classrooms get stuffy. It's both uncomfortable, and, and if there's stuff floating on in here, that's what we do. This last week, I was startled to see that a couple of libraries in Colorado like shut down because of the ethanol contamination in the bathrooms. I, I suppose this plan was to, to be testing air quality.
It, it is to, to exchange air, bring in outside, uh, fresh air, uh, and to help filter that air coming in, yeah. Particles, yes.
Twenty million dollars to do pressure systems, twenty-five million dollars more to get.
Five million dollars more. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's everything, and package one with the addition of air conditioning or cooling, uh, district-wide.
That's, there was some money.
Do we can around here?
The asbestos we have in the buildings is, is almost all asbestos, nasty under, under title.
Some of it is tile, some of it is mastic, and some is pipe insulation. The, the pipe insulation is typically located where students and most staff aren't exposed.
You move in it as a plan now, it's probably cheaper than having to remove it on an emergency basis.
It, it can be, when, the larger the package, the usually the cheaper the price.
And it's, asbestos is present, and we have to do any sort of other thing in the vicinity of asbestos.
Yes.
So I guess the thing I think we should should make a clear decision about is, is the old main part of this thing, whether we want to do that now or whether we want to wait until we actually get more students and then deal with it then. Of course, we get the more students and we have it done, then, then we'll have another crisis, so I can buy more modules, but, um, that's, that's the one, sort of sizable chunk of money here that I think is, um, to be discussed. Thank you.
I just, just a quick clarification there, we have students in the old main every day. And so we've worked hard to, at the board's direction, to make sure that we limit the amount of students there. But we do have students every day that, that, uh, attend class, um, mostly in our weightlifting and, um, weight training. But the old main is used, um, that is, that is a, that is a classroom, a large classroom, and they're in the, as you know, the auditorium there, so.
Director Cotton?
Okay, here we are again, right? One of the board's responsibilities working with administration is uh, to keep our buildings up. And so I, I have had several people, friends, that have said, another bond, I said, well, it doesn't change. The issues are still there. The issues are still there. If we do the seventy-five point five million, whatever, it's, it's a, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. It's, it's about three hundred dollars a year, twenty-four dollars or something. That's a lot of money to some people. It really is. And I get that. But we, that's, that's the system that we have. We, we do get some help from the state on these, uh, we've gotten some seismic grants, I don't know how many millions have we over thirteen million dollars that we've helped secure some of our buildings, so we're out getting what we can get, but, um, this falls locally, this is a local thing that we have to, we have to take care of, and I think we've passed one bond in forty years. Our buildings are not new. We wait another forty years. Um, I won't be here, but, um, I'm hoping that we don't have to wait another forty years, our buildings, you know, we've got to get this stuff taken care of, and, and I get it, it's a lot of money. After the last failed bond, um, we were told, uh, why don't you cut it in half? Uh, we don't need, uh, I mean, the, the auxiliary jams and the fields would be, would be nice. Our kids go out of town and they see these things, and, um, and, and it would have been nice to have that stuff, it would have been nice to have really nice playgrounds for our kids. But the community at that point in time just couldn't afford it. And it's gonna be tied again this year. Uh, I get that. Sometime along the line, we got to start taking care of this stuff. And, um, um, this district has done a really good job of keeping the buildings up. There's only so much lipstick, as they say, you can put on a pig, or I guess paint, on a building. And, and so, um, I know we're not making a decision tonight, but I wish, you know, I, I hope, uh, we, I hope the patrons kind of look at this and and we are gonna vote on the eighth of February and get comments to us. So, you know, uh, I think that's important, I don't know if we have an avenue that we can do that, I mean, they go, you know, but I'd like to see the comments from our patrons. And, um, that, the building needs to be replaced. Um, I didn't realize that we had that discussion, it was gonna be based on enrollment. Um, that building just right needs to be replaced. It's a safety thing, uh, we've brought the modulars in, which are a heck of a lot better than what uh, that building's just not conducive now for teaching, and I can see, we, we have such a great, um, location, um, CTE. I mean, maybe we can do with a new building, we can even add more more to that, uh, to the campus, because that's kind of where we're going. You know, uh, that building needs to be replaced, and, um, uh, I know we don't like to get rid of history. I get that. You know? My home's forty years old, and I look around, I thought, oh, this is in good shape, but another forty years, it's not gonna be there, but, um, that, that building needs to, to go, it'd be replaced, um. Um, and we need to get eventually, as soon as we can, get those modulars out. Was the, the plan, and place them somewhere else, or sell them, or whatever, um. But I think what you've presented is, is very, very good. I would like to see, hear some comments from, um, and, you know, it's easy to say, no, we're not gonna support that, but give us some why. You know, who's, how, who's gonna, how, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna wait forty more years? To, to get it done. I look at districts around, around us. And if they can do it, we can do it. Talking Winston-Dillard, um, Sutherland, you know, um, we, we need to get on board and get this done if possible, but I realize it's a lot of money, and people are gonna have to sacrifice somewhat. Um, but I don't know what other plan we have. But I don't know what other plan we have. It's what we have.
Thank you, Director Cotton. Director Russian?
Yeah, perhaps this is just summarizing um some of what I've heard. Um. Director Shirkcliff, who's not here this evening, and I both worked with the community group. Um, I guess almost a year and a half ago that met. We had representatives. We had from throughout the community. We had uh people from the Rosenberg City Council and uh parents and teachers and a lot of people involved with identifying projects that went into the bond that we ran in May of twenty twenty two. It was entirely a community driven uh list of projects. It wasn't us sitting here saying, gosh, we want. It wasn't like kids filling out a Christmas list, right? It wasn't a wish list. Those, every item on that list came from the community. Um, and then, like Superintendent Corden said, um. We understand that economic times have changed, and we are trying to listen to our community. And we did exactly what they asked. We've now cut what we were asking for and what they were asking for in half. And we have taken it down to the bare bones. And it, you're right, Director Cotton, it is still going to be a sacrifice. But this is my third point. And this is no one's fault. It's just what it is. In the state of Oregon, this is the only way we can build buildings. This is it. This is all we have. And it's not very fair. I don't think it's the best system. I would love to change how buildings are funded. Um, I would love to see some equalization across the state um with tax revenue and resources to help support infrastructure in school districts. But that's not available to us. Um, all we can do is pass a bond, and we have aging buildings that we need to uh improve and make safe for our students and our teachers and our staff. So these are projects that came from the community. We've tried to listen to the community and scale it back. And we have to do this. It's the only way. There is no other path to to fixing these problems. And I wish there were, but this is all we've got.
Thank you very much. Let me remind you that we will not be taking a vote tonight. But it would be uh a step forward if we are on the same page as far as do we want to go back to the community for a bond? If we are on the same page, we will continue to do the work. Any comments?
No, modulars aren't going to be burning. Although I clearly remember
We actually need those modulars at other schools. There are a few principals in here that would gladly take them on their campuses right now.
There is a, there is a risk of the old men to begin like that and the swashbuckling. So I would withdraw my question. But I would prefer a description, the project for something more detailed and create a modern education facility. So they would say what facilities in fact you would be putting in that building. So it's running down how they will. And you are right, there is. You know, there has been some inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So these prices here are the same as what we put in. These are these have been augmented.
Updated.
Well, when I say augmented, it really it's their inflationary costs. So if some of these projects are you know, upwards of twenty percent more expensive in two thousand twenty three than they would have been in two thousand twenty. It's a really interesting community discussion. I talk about this with lots of patrons, right? Because the question, and I understand we in the May twenty twenty bond, we ran into a worldwide pandemic. The May twenty twenty two bond, we ran into a forty year inflation high where people were trying to figure out if they should eat or fill their car up. Um, but what we do know is that waiting has a cost. And not just a cost in aging infrastructure, but actually a physical, I mean, actually a a tangible cost and um, the acquisition of materials, hard costs, labor costs have gone up. Um, so uh, we, when we work with construction management uh here recently to take a look at the delta between, you know, would there be a delta between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three? We've seen some decreasing prices and and materials, for example. Um, you know, petroleum's gone down, which helps in a whole bunch of different areas with with um those hard costs. But it's up eight percent. The gyms went up fifteen percent, not part of this proposal. And so it does beg the question really around. So this is, these are not additional items we're proposing, but the cost's going up. It's the cost of of doing business, right? It's the cost of labor and the cost of materials. Uh, and there has been a significant escalation the last couple of years with building. So uh, no, there's no um additional intricacies in these. It's just, it's the same items we've talked about for the last few years. But the cost, those items have increased.
And like most things that we're dealing with with inflation, we it goes up really fast, and we don't see things go down very fast. So it's like having to replace your old car. Uh, you know, the longer you wait, yes, you can keep trying to repair it, repair it, repair it. But I think we're to the point where we just, some of these things we we do have to do. Um, it's only going to get more expensive for us. So if it's going to cost us like using your figure rod, twenty four dollars a month. Um, now, you know, what is it going to be next year? You know, I I don't know. I mean, we can only imagine, but I'm thinking it's not going to get um significantly better. So you know, I think we almost are, you know, our hand is forced to to, you know, do this because it has to be done.
The, if the bond was to pass, that would, that dollar amount would stay the same. Uh, you know, I'm wouldn't.
It wouldn't increase.
It wouldn't increase. Uh, at the end, we pay probably a little bit less. But what 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 the dice were rolling on is are the cost and labor costs going to continue to go up? So you very well could see a few less things. You know, maybe one building doesn't get heating and air conditioning. I don't know, but I mean, that would start World War Three, but but um the the dollar amount for the bond would stay.
Yeah.
Would not.
It, yeah, it would stay the same. And again, the, we would, you know, do our due diligence to secure contracts and keep those prices where they're at. Now, the other thing that we haven't really talked about, it was mentioned briefly, is um, you know, as a as a patron in our community who pays taxes and lives here. Um, you know, I think all of us popular of the boards, you know, needs to also uh consider the inflationary costs of borrowing money right now. Because you'll see that if you look at this bond potential opposed to the May twenty two bond, it's half, a little under half the dollar amount at the seventy five five number, but it's not half the assessed value. Because because of the inflationary, you know, we've seen the Fed really kind of be concerned about inflation, so rates go up, and that means our ability to borrow becomes more expensive. And so there's also that other thing to, so we have labor as one thing. There's cost and acquisition of materials, which had had been a challenge, but we also, I think, part of the discussion has to be the fiduciary responsibility of the community around, you know, where is that, you know, uh, uh, an escalation and market rates? Uh, when you're borrowing money, if you can, you know, if someone's in a market for a home right now, you're dealing with this right now. Um, and so there's also that timing as well. And so um, those are all considerations with this.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are looking at a timeline. We need to come back to our February eighth meeting. Prepare to vote on a resolution for the bond measure so it could be timely filed and be put on the May twenty three election. We will need your effort to vote. We will need your effort to reach out to the community to move this from a vision to actuality, to make it happen. Uh, as you mentioned, as the the longer we push this down the road, the more costly it's going to get. So let's be prepared. If there are no other comments with tonight?
Can I just make one suggestion? Sharon, you can take this as you want to tonight. What what might be helpful for us is if we, and it's not a vote, but if if it would be helpful for us to get a sense of where the board might be in a potential proposal, is we prepare a resolution. We could prepare a few resolutions, but might be helpful tonight to get a sense of tonight after this presentation, uh, maybe each board member, if you, if you're comfortable saying, God, this would be a proposal. Uh, Director Shirkcliff didn't be here tonight, but he he said, uh, wanted to share that the seventy five five number at ninety nine cents was kind of where he was at. It'd be helpful if you'd entertain that that idea of just asking, and then we could probably put something together.
Yeah, if I can go first, because then I have to go pick up my nine year old. Um, daddy's out of town. Um. I'm right at, I agree with Director Shirkcliff. I think that seventy five five that puts the tax levy at ninety nine cents per thousand is the number I'm comfortable with.
Yeah. Any other comments? If then we will prepare a resolution for the seventy five five. It will be to our February eighth uh board meeting for a vote. But there'll be no other business before our work session tonight. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is scheduled for February the eighth, and it will be held at Winchester Elementary School. It will also be available on Zoom. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. Good night. Meeting adjourned.